First item on the agenda is approval of the minute meetings from July. I looked them over, they looked fine to me, everyone, anyone else have any issues with the minute meetings? Have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve minutes?
Second. Okay, minute meetings are approved. First agenda item is one some of you may be familiar with, it's been on our different agendas for a while since April. It's ordinance 2022-10. It's to permit parking in the front yard setback for single-family dwellings located in residential zoning districts when additional parking is required due to conversion of an attached garage. In July, I took this clean version of the ordinance rewrite to the Board of Commissioners, they approved this rewrite of the ordinance unanimously. Since that time, the way things work is after the Board of Commissioners approves a rewritten ordinance, it goes back to Delaware County Planning Commission and us. And in that interim period, we received two memos, one from the code, our zoning officer, Kevin Kocansky, who suggested an addendum to the ordinance that the BOC approved. We also got correspondence from the Planning Commission in Delaware County that they were concerned about possible ambiguity in language. So, they thought we should examine our BOC-approved ordinance one more time, and it happens that Kevin Kocansky's, his addendum fits squarely with what the Delaware County Planning Commission suggested we look at because of possible ambiguity. So, what we have before us is, we have three, basically three versions, we have, like I've stated, and my suggestion at this time, since we've been wrestling with this since April, is to accept Kevin's addendum minus the, minus his suggestion that we have a line in the ordinance saying the township engineer needs to approve every, every time this comes before us, every time there's a filing that deals with those ordinance. I felt because Kevin's language covered that, that it was redundant to have the township engineer have to do that. And I asked Steve Morcini if he agreed, and he did. Ian, if you could put up memo to PC proposed amendment on the screen so everyone could see. It was in the packet, but it's possible that people didn't. Okay, that right there, Ian, is that's the Delaware County Planning Commission's memo, but like I said, all they wanted us to do was look at the ordinance with possible language changes. So, there's nothing in that except that suggestion. But, yeah, that one would be Kevin's memo, I believe.
It's the third link on the agenda.
So, basically, what Kevin is suggesting is that we add to the ordinance that was approved by the BOC, we add, "The number of parking spaces permitted in the required front yard setback shall not exceed the number of spaces relocated as a result of the conversion of an attached garage into living space. However, in no case shall more than two parking spaces be located within the required front yard setback." Kevin felt that the first section, "In the event the reduction in the number of parking spaces caused by the conversion of attached garage to living space causes a dwelling unit to have less than the number of parking spaces," indicates that some property owners could be creating a non-conforming situation, but through the elimination of some or all of the required parking spaces. And that's why he suggested adding that. He also suggested keeping in the clause about the location of parking spaces permitted in the required front yard setback under this section shall be subject to approval by the engineer, and I think we should eliminate that. So, that's basically the, that's the sum of all parts of this ordinance rewrite as it went its way through us. Do any commissioners have thoughts besides mine?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, with respect to the two suggested changes, and I want to deal with them individually, I would not so much object to the first change as outlined, as it is really aligned more or less within the spirit of the ordinance, which, for the record, is created due to conversion of an attached garage. I mean, this is what the purpose of the ordinance is. So, I do see that the Delaware County Planning Commission wanted to lead us down that path to delineate how many spaces we could have in the first item. So, I don't find that objectionable. What I do find objectionable is point number two, that Mr. Kocansky's point that the amendment limits the setback relief to only those properties with attached garages. This ordinance amendment only stipulates changes in the ordinance for those folks with attached garages. So, anything else, any other amendments are not in line with that ordinance. And my preference is that in the cases of folks who do not have driveways presently, that's something for zoning to take a look at where the driveway placement could be and where they could actually create space to park cars off-street.
So, I hear you, but my feeling is the second part could, it doesn't do any harm. It's just more specific, and it doesn't remove the zoning hearing board relief. So, it just seems to me that I would rather get this ordinance in the books, because, you know, even if we, whatever we decide tonight has to go back to BOC, it has to go back to Delaware County Planning Commission. So, we're looking at another month or two, and we've been, I feel like we've been sitting on this since April, so my suggestion would be we accept Kevin's, we accept Kevin's comments in full, except for the township engineer inspection, or the township engineer being part of the process.
Just, so, are you saying, taking essentially that sub-part A about the township engineer out of each of the proposed amendments?
Correct, because of the detail in the ads, that I just think that's redundant at this point. Any other commission comment on this before I ask for public comment? Is there any public comment?
Hi, Baron Gummer, Southway Avenue. Just to clarify, so, I see line item one up there, and then you're also saying you want line item two, which isn't shown in its entirety also in this. Okay. I don't, the Board of Commissioners, the reason they passed what they did, and actually, Steve Morcini might be able to chime into that, they did not want that broad latitude where just people could, if they didn't have the required parking to add that. So, I don't think that's, you're talking about, you know, it's going to take months, it's going to go around again, because they're going to chop that out, I'm sure.
Well, I'll say this to that, Kevin will be at the Board of Commissioners meeting, and if they want to chop it out, they can chop it out.
Yep, but that's essentially what they did at the last meeting, those were their comments. That's why they went with the more restrictive one that you guys approved. What you approved, all they added was the number and loca, they added the number and location of parking spaces permitted in the front yard under this section shall be approved by the township engineer. That's all they added to yours, because they wanted to chop it down, and they wanted to, you know, control the location. So, that brings me to my second point, is they don't want whoever gets this authority to put in the spaces in the front yard to be able to choose wherever they go. They don't want them necessarily next to the sidewalk, they want the township engineer to do that. So, what you're saying in terms of this roundabout, two of the things you're doing are going to cause it to loop back around, because that's, these are explicitly things the Board of Commissioners said in sending this down here, is that the township engineer for the location and the number, now, the number's being taken care of more in the maximum, but then they also wanted the very limited scope, which is why number two there is something they explicitly talked about not wanting, and the only reason they passed the other is because they had this queue waiting for folks that were converting the garage. So, with the comp plan coming up and redoing zoning and saldo, they didn't want to do something more broadly. They did that initially just to get things moving and let those people go, but they wanted to close that loop as quickly as possible. So, adding number two is probably going to cause another go-around with them.
I just want, I feel like at this point, after this process, I want the township zoning officer to, you know, he will deal with this if they have, if there's pushback on it.
Yeah, well, that's, but that's essentially what happened at the last meeting, they gave him the pushback, and they asked him a lot of questions, and this is what they ended up with. So, it's just going to happen again, in my opinion.
So, I would like someone to, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm new to this issue, I apologize. I'm not going to get into the debate you're having right now, but I have a simple question, I think. I tried to look up the existing ordinance so that I could understand what the change was. It talked about not applying to residences in certain zones prior to the enactment of this ordinance. Can you tell me what that date is that's the cutoff? Can somebody?
Well, the problem, this emanated because people who needed to convert garages didn't have a way to.
I understand.
So, that was what was driving this.
I understand.
So, it's really not a park, as much a parking issue as a garage conversion issue, but that's why we wanted to get the ordinance rewritten. So, there's an ordinance on the books now?
I understand.
That allows?
The ordinance on the book has that same language in it. The ordinance on the books says it does not apply to residences that were built prior to the date.
Correct.
All I'm trying to find out is what that date is.
Oh, that date was, I believe, like 2002, or it could have been 1993. It's, if someone has a better memory, Steve, that was, that's very dated.
I'm sorry, I'd have to look that up, I don't recall, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I don't either, except that it was, it's quite old.
Well, that's, that's why I'm asking. Can I get?
Yeah, I'm just on the fly, I can't give you an answer, I could, I could give you an answer later, after I have a chance to look it up, I will do that.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, I'll get your name after the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we're also amending an ordinance that was just passed this year, so if that's at all helpful. So, there's a second date there.
So, folks, would, I would like to propose that we approve this rewrite with the additions that Mr. Kocansky has made.
Mr. Chairman, would it, would it be possible to split apart the two elements and call a vote on those?
Sure.
Because there is some...
Sure. Yeah, that'd be fun. So, in terms of the first change, change number one?
You'd like a motion?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion to approve, Mr. Grimm, I would, what's the best way to form the motion?
Which are you trying to do first? I mean, you can only do one motion, and if that motion is accepted, we can only do it one way. So, I didn't know what you meant by the split vote.
So, there are two elements to be amended to the ordinance here. The first element was the wording, "In the event of the reduction in the number of parking, in the event of the need to relocate any off-street parking spaces." So, that's a wording change, and there's sub-paragraph A and B there.
I would think that what you would do is first do a motion including both of them, and if that doesn't pass, then you can do a motion with only the first, if that's acceptable to you. And I would do a motion for the amendment as in Kevin Kocansky's inter-office memorandum dated 8/1/2002, except not including subsection A, "The location of parking spaces permitted in required front yard setback under this section shall be subject to the approval by the township engineer."
Okay, got it.
And actually, there's three, because we want to eliminate the phrase, the clause regarding the township engineer.
So, subsection 1A-A, we want to eliminate as well as subsection 2AA.
Right.
Okay, got it. All right. Motion to approve ordinance number 2022-10, in accordance with the Kevin Kocansky inter-office memo of August 1, 2022, not to include subsection 1A-A and 2AA where it references the township engineer.
Do I have a second? All in favor? I think we're 5-1.
Who was the one? Thank you.
I was the one.
Second up on the agenda tonight is the Eagle Road, Stratford Avenue, St. Honor Before you guys start, I just want to say that we, you've been before on a nine-lot proposal, that in terms of, it's that, that application is dead now. This is complete, we're completely starting over as the planning, for the, just for the fellow planners here.
Correct. So, just a little bit of background, but thanks for that, Matt. David Falcone here on behalf of the applicant. We were here previously on one piece of this property, and I'll kind of identify that, which is this, this top piece here, which is, and then this piece here. That was one parcel acquired by the applicant. At that last meeting in front of the Planning Commission, we indicated that there were discussions to acquire potentially some other pieces of property that were adjoining here. They had not at that time been acquired, they were still in due diligence, and as a result, we were moving forward with the initial nine-lot plan. Since that time, the applicant has gone hard on those properties and plans to acquire them, and as a result, we've kind of shelved that nine-lot plan that you all saw in favor of this plan, which is 14 lots. There are still nine lots shown on the initial piece of property that was located, I guess you can say, towards the top of this plan, you know, the northeast portion. Since that time, there's two properties that are shown here. One is a larger piece, that was the old bed and breakfast over there on Stratford Avenue, and then a single-family home located next to that property as well. Those properties were kind of brought into this, into this plan, connected, they'll all be part of the same community, and the plan was reworked, resubmitted to the township, and we obtained new review letters for that. The, kind of the ultimate end, I guess, result of that initial submission versus this submission is, some of the houses up on the original plan have shifted in location with respect to allowing us to do some more for stormwater. We've also been able to generate more common area in the community as a result of this plan. So, there'll be a more inclusive stormwater management system, it will allow for some more versatility on a few of the lots in the initial plan, and there'll be a larger common area. Beyond that, there's some engineering comments we've gotten from the applicant and from the township's consultants. So, I'll turn it over to Bern Panzak and to Mike Bocaer, that's our landscape consultant and our engineer, and then if there's any additional questions for me, legal questions, I can hop up at the end and answer them. But I think to get a more inclusive overview of what's changed here and what we've done since the last meeting, I think those two folks are going to be able to give it to you the best.
That's great. And does that include traffic as well?
There'll be some discussion from Michael about traffic, but I don't think we're going to get too deep into the traffic weeds tonight.
Is that because the traffic study's not complete, or?
We don't have our traffic consultant with us, yeah.
So, Mr. Falcone, just to make sure we're all clear, our consultant's latest review letter required an update or redo of that traffic impact statement, so maybe that's, for the board's sake, that's why it's not here.
Understood, yep.
Hi, Michael Bocaer with Apex Design and Engineering Group, the civil engineer for the project. As Dave mentioned, the applicant acquired two additional properties, 211 Stratford Ave. and 227 Stratford Ave, located in this area. That added about one and a half acres to the overall developable area for this property, and enabled us to better incorporate that leg, that 40-foot-wide leg that was part of the original lot, always seemed to be an issue as to what could we do with that leg, and that has been now better incorporated to the development that you see in front of you tonight. As mentioned, that leg was about 9,800 square feet of common area attributed to the development. Now, with the reconfiguration, we are able to have a larger common area between the rear yards of these houses, and that is just about 16,000 square feet. So, it's about one and a half times the size, almost two times the size of the area that we had previously. The cul-de-sac itself, the road itself, remains unchanged, same configuration, same length width as we had previously shown. What acquiring these lots enabled us to do was to turn the houses on lots five, six, and seven. On the previous plan, they were rotated 90 degrees and were more parallel to the road. So, we're able to rotate them so that we can construct the same house along the cul-de-sac, and that opened up the frontage for this, what you now see, Lot 8. The actual house will sit on the new land that was acquired, there's no new real development or development area shown within this limits of the original tract.
So, Mike, stormwater is the same, and the stormwater remediation is the same as it was for the nine properties?
The thought is the same, it's been reconfigured, though. So, with this area, we're now able to place a larger common system in this open space, common area, I should say. And what that did is, that enabled us to remove the stormwater system that was in the rear of these lots. So, it opened up the rear of lots one through four, as well as five, six, and seven, which helped mediate some of the effects we may have had on the adjoining vegetation to those lots, and opened up possibilities for those homeowners to do increased patios or something in the future in their rear yards as well. Otherwise, stormwater management remains the same, there's a system in the front yards of the lots along the cul-de-sac to control mainly the runoff from the house and the drive. The road, to the extent possible, has been collected and shifted to be controlled by this system, as well as the system down by the cul-de-sac.
Mr. Bocaer, while you're on that, so Lot 8 will now, in the front yard of Lot 8, that will now hold the stormwater management system for the cul-de-sac, correct?
That, along with the system in the common area, correct.
So, does Lot 8 share that system?
All of these systems will be managed and maintained by the HOA in its entirety.
So, all the lots' front yard systems?
Equally, yes.
Okay. I have one last question, it's not so much for you, it's for the developer, it's my job to ask. So, you're planning on meeting the requirements of the stormwater management ordinance. What I'm asking is, if Mr. Hollowell will direct you to, since we have some space there, to expand this system somewhat, to go over and above the current ordinance that we have. He doesn't have to answer me now, we can talk about that later, but I do want to get that out there.
And we'll contact Steve regarding that. Engineering-wise, they're the main changes to the project, so I don't know if you want to discuss the waivers now, if you'd rather landscape architect to go through.
Yeah, I think we should hear from the landscape architect, and then, then go through the comments from both Gilmore and...
Great, thank you.
Good evening, Bern Panzak, Glacken Thomas Panzak Landscape Architects. What you had seen previously, as Michael and Dave had described, was the original nine-lot subdivision. That landscape has essentially remained the same. We've got street trees arrayed around the cul-de-sac, there's a significant buffer of evergreen trees on the neighboring property side of those street trees. We've got buffer and street tree requirements that we've applied along Eagle Road. We now no longer have the stormwater management basins behind lots one through four, and as Michael said, that's taking some of the pressure off of some of the existing root systems of trees that would remain in the backs of those properties. What we have also is the new acquired lots and the common area that sits between what was the nine-lot and now the 14-lot subdivision. Many of our replacement trees have been arrayed in that, in that open space area, and we've come pretty close to the proposed stormwater management basin. That might get squeezed a little bit if we were to expand that basin area. And then, along Stratford Avenue, we've extended the sidewalk all along the new and proposed properties, and have provided the appropriate streetscape elements, street trees, and the like, and along, all along Stratford Avenue, and, you know, really just included open space landscaping between the units that...
space landscaping between the units that would be appropriate to provide, you know, privacy between these units with evergreen, upright evergreen hedging, and, you know, that's also common to our borders with adjacent neighbors here and here. And as I mentioned earlier, we do have a fairly significant evergreen buffer along the cul-de-sac on the West Avenue side. We do have streetlights, several of them, to provide a, some modest level of lighting along the cul-de-sac. They would be located on the, on the West Avenue side. There is what we believe to be appropriate houseside shielding and light distribution patterns that would take light away from the backs of the West Avenue properties. And that lighting plan was included in the package, which also shows all the photometric distribution of those lights. There would be no additional lighting along Strafford Avenue. There are streetlights out there in, you know, select locations across that, that frontage. I think that pretty much sums it up, unless there are questions?
Yeah, when you were before Shade Tree, I think July...
Yes.
You had suggested maybe a site visit for the Shade Tree Commission?
Pardon me?
You had suggested the possibility of a site visit for the Shade Tree Commission?
Yes, that, that has not happened, but we, we tried to get that going, and then, you know, the intervening change from nine to 14, and we're absolutely going to follow up and...
Great, great. Because I think what I heard from nearby residents is a desire to, you know, for us to see, or for the Shade Tree Commission to see, you know, what the screening would actually, how it would affect things.
Right, yep. Every intention to do that, and, you know, we've done that tour with the neighbors at least once, and, you know, intend to kind of make that tour one more time with the Shade Tree Advisory. So if no other question, we can talk through the waivers and review letters at this point?
Any commission members have any comments so far? I think...
Okay. So as part of this development, we are asking for a couple waivers. One, that the information we've shown on the vicinity plan would be sufficient, and if it's not, for a partial waiver from providing all of the other features within 500 feet of the site. Those features are shown on the aerial, they're just not surveyed. To not install curb along Strafford Avenue due to the prevailing conditions, and to avoid conflicts with existing utilities. That has to do with the width of the road. The cartway right now is, I believe, 24 feet wide, so 12 foot on either side. To install the curb typically, you would extend that out to 14 feet. There's utility poles on that side of the road that would all have to be relocated in order to accomplish that. To date, no curbing has been installed along Strafford Avenue, and there already is an existing sidewalk from the intersection with Eagle to the development, and then we wish to continue that same alignment down across the new properties. Then we're also asking to not install sidewalk, sidewalk north of the proposed Russein Honoré Road, along Eagle Road, to lessen the impact to some mature vegetation on the adjacent property. We discussed this last time. There is a mature, I believe it's a pin oak, located on the adjacent property, and there's a two- to three-foot high embankment along that side of Eagle Road. So extending the sidewalk would require excavation into that embankment that may damage the root system for that tree at this point, just to install a dead-end sidewalk. In lieu of that, we were going to extend the sidewalk on the south side of our site to connect about the same five, six feet, to connect to where they stopped the existing sidewalk from the previous development. So we would pick up that lineal footage of sidewalk on the adjacent property on the south side.
So that sidewalk would connect with another sidewalk?
Yes, there's currently sidewalk that extends to just short of our site along Eagle Road, so we would pick up and extend our sidewalk to that sidewalk, either stop it at this intersection, or possibly, I know one comment was to provide at least a safe landing area on that side, and we can certainly do that, just a four, five-by-five pad, but don't extend past that to avoid any impact to that mature tree.
Mr. Boker, would you be willing to meet me and Mr. Drummond onsite? We have some questions concerning the impact of the tree, as well as the sidewalk to the south.
Absolutely.
Great, we'll set that up then, thank you.
And Steve Schreiner, can you tell me about that tree? You probably have told us about the tree, but I've forgotten what you said. You know where I'm going with this, Steve, it's like, is it worth saving?
Sure. This is the pin oak tree to the right of the apron, the entrance. So the driveway was shifted to accommodate the neighboring tree's root system in order to preserve it. It's in, it's in good shape. As Mike said, it is set up on top of a hillside, so if you needed to excavate to put in a sidewalk, well then, we're taking everything away from shifting the driveway to preserve the tree. So that's why we were keeping it, yep.
I just had a question for, for Dave. When you were here the last time, did we not talk about that tree and future potential of having the sidewalk extended to the north?
I think what we said, I think you had asked us to reserve potential easement or right-of-way, or some designation that in the event sidewalk ever came further down, that the association would, would put the sidewalk in there and make it available, and we said we would do that, to accommodate if the sidewalk had to go further north, if there was development north, that they wouldn't get in the way of connecting that sidewalk. So I think that was the comment at the last hearing, and we said that would be fine.
I have a question. There's the common open space, and how do you get there?
To the common area?
Is there a common pathway?
With this development...
I'm not seeing it, I guess.
The applicant's intent is to have all of the yards maintained by one landscaper. So in essence, you know, you'll have common areas between these properties where it'll be all maintained at once, and I do believe we provided a path along this driveway or an open area to get to the open space, common area.
That's the access, Steve, right off that driveway coming off the end there, Lot 8, I believe.
Between Lots 8 and 7. It's hard to tell with the vegetation.
And along the same path here, what's the access to the four homes below that common area? Is it through their backyard?
These four homes?
Yes.
They directly abut that common area, their rear yards.
Got it.
Just another thing on the subject of sidewalks, it's in the letter. Previously, we had stopped the sidewalk at this driveway, and the comment was to extend the sidewalk around the cul-de-sac. We weren't sure if that meant around the bulb or the entire length, and we believe, it sounded like the intent was that if we extended the sidewalk, at least around the bulb, that may be okay. We may still need a partial waiver to not extend it down the entire length. That's, we have extended the sidewalk to at least wrap around the bulb of the cul-de-sac, and would ask for a partial waiver.
If you extended the sidewalk through where you have the trees lined up there, you'd be encroaching on the, on the, on the planting scheme with the sidewalk?
That's correct.
Which I personally think the more, the better screen you have, the more satisfied the neighbors will be. Plus, you're going to have a sidewalk on the other side of the street, right?
And that was one of the comments, Matt, I'm glad you brought that up. So we were here last time, I think there were actually a few folks that said, "Do you really even want or need sidewalks in here?" And we said, you know, we thought they were appropriate, but there was discussion about stopping it at the other end of the bulb to preserve that buffer, which ultimately, I know a lot of the neighbors that were here that have expressed, you know, thoughts on this project, it's been a lot about that screening, making sure that buffer was strong and dense. And so that's, if we need the partial waiver, it would be just to stop the sidewalk on the other end of the bulb. There was discussion on that as well. I think, Lane, you were involved in that, I think David in that as well at the last meeting.
And the rest of the letter would be, "We'll comply," and we will work out with the township engineer.
Just want to add one thing, I think, as well, that's important to note. On the homes that are being placed on the site, they are, they're not kind of, they're not small lots, they're not kind of minimum-sized lots trying to maximize density, they're actually oversized lots, you know, to try and match neighboring homes in size and scope, rather than try and get the most out of the, out of the property. So I think Michael can speak more specifically to sizing, but the goal here was to try and create, and you can kind of see with one very obvious exception, most of the houses there are similarly sized, and we tried to kind of meet that scope and scale with this, with this project.
Dave was referring to is, the minimum lot size in this district would be 7,000 square feet, and all of our lots exceed 10,000 square feet in size.
Mr. Boker, would you wish to step through the Gilmore letter, please?
Sure.
I know there's some duplication there, but Damon did bring up some other items.
Sure, do you want to go through item by item, or it's mostly "will comply," well, it's all "will comply"?
That takes care of it.
I just, it was, my memory is jogged, but going back to the stormware for a minute, if I recall from the last time, you guys had numbers and you were exceeding what you had, at least for the original nine, but do you have those numbers yet at this point? Or, or like, where, where does that stand in terms of the capacity of what you're proposing? Are you still working that out?
It's still being further refined, but we do have, inherent with these systems is, they are overdesigned to a point. Any testing that you do onsite for infiltration, you apply a factor of safety of two to those values. And then within this township, we also can't take the benefit of the stone that may surround the pipe within these systems that provides even some additional capacity, where you have 40% voids within the stones, those are not included within our calculations. So we build in a buffer in accordance with your ordinance with the design of these systems. And because of the topography of the site, the site generally slopes from this intersection down to the north corner of the lot. So we're picking up runoff from the rear of some of the adjoining properties, and then we're also infiltrating that runoff in, into the ground as well. So whereas previously, you know, 100% of this runoff came through, I think we were down to 90, 91% collected, captured, and infiltrated into the ground. And even with these new lots, there was about 28,000 square feet of existing impervious on the two new lots that were acquired, that was not, there was no stormwater management for that coverage. So even just with a new development, we reduced that coverage to about 17,500 from the 28,000. So we've reduced the amount of coverage that is going to be in that area, and then we're providing new stormwater for that as well, to take that, that area back to a meadow condition, in essence.
So, Mr. Brubacher, what Mr. Boker explained is basically complying with our ordinance?
Yeah, no, I guess...
Right? So it's, there are some ancillary benefits, but my request is to go over and above those requirements?
I understood, I just remember you telling me the last time. I haven't yet.
Mr. Boker, I do have a couple more questions for you, if it's okay, Mr. Chairman, while we're talking over here. So, understanding that all those areas will be maintained through the HOA by, you know, a single contractor, if a resident, if a new resident wishes to make an improvement to the home, we're assuming that's going to go through the HOA? That would go through the HOA, Mr. Falcone?
So there'll be, there'll be general restrictions in the declaration, which will be reviewed by Mr. Graham's office, but ultimately, the declaration will not attempt to supersede any township requirements. I don't know if that's what you're asking, Steve. They would always have to comply here, but we would have our additional restrictions on top of that, that, for the community.
No, I understand they have to come through us, I was just kind of wasting that.
Yep.
And Mr. Boker, if you could go over again, so if I live on Lot, a lot that does not abut the open space, how do I get there? I go down Lot 8's driveway, you were saying?
No, next to Lot, in between Lot 8's and 7, I believe we provided...
Okay, I see a little, a little sliver?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
The last time we met, we, there was a little bit of a spirited debate over the residential disclosure statement.
So, we'll, we'll do that, of course, but we don't, now we don't have the issue that that spoke to. That specifically spoke to the notifying the lots that would not be able to place improvements in their rear yard because of stormwater management systems. As a result of the redesign, we've eliminated those systems in the rear yard, so there's no concerns there about, dear homeowner, should you ever have a question? But to the extent there's a disclosure statement needed or desired by the township, we'll...
Yeah, I think that was...
We'll issue that, but I think we've now eliminated that issue.
And that includes Lot 8, because Lot 8 has a lot of stormwater management on it?
Not in the rear yard. So that was only with respect to rear yard, pools, patios, things like that, that would be precluded as a result of existing stormwater. So all of those issues for those lots have been eliminated now.
So Lot 8 is not an anomaly, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep, but to the extent another issue were to come up, we would be happy to include it.
I apologize.
Yeah.
So the front yards, they're going to be restricted because they have the stormwater management, so they wouldn't be able to do any work in the front yards, because they're, that's where they are, and the HOA are going to, they are going to be responsible to maintain those. So, and is that a limited common area, as is the rear yards, or is it a common area?
So the, inside the, the boundaries of the unit, they would be limited common elements because the property itself would be deeded, but just subject to limited common area restriction. The common areas would, really, the common area is the, the area we've been talking about behind Lots 4, 5, and 6, is that right, Michael?
Yes.
Yeah, so that, that's the common area. Limited common area would be within the property line, but items that would be maintained by the HOA.
Right. I think it was a little confusing before, because somebody said maybe you could cut through the backyards, and I think that's where we were just like, hold it, is that common area?
Oh, right.
But so, you're going to, for this, limit, within their limited common area, not be able to do any work in the front yard, but in the rear yards where there's not any stormwater management, they could possibly put in some kind of improvement?
Something like that, correct. Previously, they could not, and that was the concern Mary had raised, yeah, about that, so.
So, in terms of, you're fully complying to both letters, what about the street dedication? That was an issue last time.
It is intent to dedicate the street.
And the township, I mean, I, I personally am not in favor of dedicating the street, I think it should be a private road. I don't know how the commissioners feel, I don't know how staff feels. Steve, like, I want to chime in here, because that was in Roger's letter, it was like, is that, that decision hasn't been made, according to...
So that the developer can offer the street for dedication to the Board of Commissioners, the Board of Commissioners does not have to accept? And I think we've spoken, when I say internally, I don't mean with the board or the manager, I'm not speaking for any of them, but with staff and consultants, that this, this street may lend itself to be, becoming a private street. The developer has already taken it to the point where all lots are being maintained by a single entity, all the stormwater is managed by a single entity. I don't think it's a reach to have the street, just so everybody's aware, even if something is a private street, they still get solid waste collection, rec... is a private street, they still get solid waste collection, recycling collection, leave connect, collection, police and fire protection. If this became a private street, what it would mean is that the maintenance and capital expense of that road would fall on that homeowners association.
So, Steve, that's really a Board of Commissioners' decision, not a planning commission decision?
I think the planning commission could make a recommendation, but either way, that will be in time for the commissioners.
Okay.
Steve, just one other thing on the list that you just ticked off. I think snow removal also would not.
Would not.
Would not.
Any other commission comment at this?
Can you repeat that?
Snow removal would not be part of the, it would be picked up by the HOA.
That's correct, sir. And as we discussed today, Mr. Chairman, if the board didn't wish to accept dedication, the developer would have to request a waiver for that.
I just had one question. With regard to the lighting that goes on the street, has that changed since the last time you were here? I thought there was some concern that it was too much lighting? It has not changed since the last time. It's actually a pretty moderate level of lighting. It doesn't meet the intensities that you typically see for a parking lot in certain areas. They are well spaced, and the lights are all provided with house shields or glare shields on the backs of those fixtures, so they don't project onto the adjoining properties on the other side of the cul-de-sac.
Just have one clarification regarding the common area. I know that that's where the water management system lies, so development would be probably not probable, but last time we were here, you agreed to restrict the development of common areas. Would you be willing to do that here?
Yes.
Okay.
Should we go to public comment? Okay. Anyone come up? Identify yourself.
My name is Gregory Zary. I live at Six Forest Lane in Stratford, and we were party to the Hamilton estate, which included this property. So we certainly have interest in what's happening on this property. And I think primarily our, the residents' concerns are going to entail stormwater and traffic. Since traffic isn't able to speak tonight, or they can't speak tonight to that, then will there be another meeting to review the traffic issues?
Yeah, I mean, I think, Dave, you were seeking preliminary approval, right? Yeah, but I don't, I don't know if I want to go there without a traffic, hearing from traffic. I just, so.
All right. Thank you. So focusing on stormwater management, I was very curious about the previous design and understood how that worked, and now I'm trying to compare this new stormwater design system. So we have, previously, there were two basins or stormwater management systems at each lot. The one in the front yard primarily for the street is my understanding, and the one in the rear yard was primarily for the lot and the structure runoff. Now that the rear stormwater management systems have been consolidated into the common area, I'm assuming the front stormwater management system is still dedicated to just the street runoff?
It sounded like it wasn't. It sounded like it was serving two, there are going to be two purposes served by the stormwater.
Please.
We've kind of flipped some of the responsibilities of the stormwater system. So what used to be in the front to control the road, the front systems will now control more the house and the driveway, and the large common system in the common area will be controlling the road, along with a systems on Lot Eight in the front yard of Lot Eight. They're there for the road, and then the systems in the front mainly control the individual house and a little bit of the driveway in some cases.
Thank you. The last time that we were reviewing this project, you know, I was questioning the topography of the site and insisting where the low point was, and I was 100% wrong. I apologize for that in the last meeting. So not to run that same error again, if I understand correctly, the high point is here, and really, it pretty much stretches over, it's like a three-foot embankment between the property here and the road, the way it exists, and everything flows down and then crosses the railroad underneath, there's a culvert. So, so that makes me wonder about, you know, these houses here, the grade is sloping, I guess, in this direction away from the stormwater management system, so is there a collection system along the, in the property to redirect the water back over towards the basin? I'm not sure how you're dealing with the runoff in those areas. And then if the roof drainage is being collected and piped to that, or is it going to grade and finding its way back to that basin?
So, where needed, we have provided for swales in between the lots and inlets to catch some of that surface runoff that, you know, from the midpoint of the house to the front, and all of the rainwater conductors are being directed directly into those systems.
Next question is, are the stormwater management basins interconnected to, you know, the series? The individual ones as well as the common area one? Are they all interconnected?
They are not.
Okay. So then overflow, potential overflow on the site would then revert to just surface drainage, the way it originally, or it currently leaves the site?
We have added one additional feature for any overflow, in the event that the systems are overtaxed, which currently they are designed to completely handle 100-year storm event. We have provided for an overflow pipe to a level spreader at the rear of Lot Ten, so that there wouldn't be flooding within the cul-de-sac. It can take that excess runoff and divert it around, whereas before, it was going to be kind of surface runoff across the drive and around the lot. We've now piped that to a level spreader to the rear of the lot.
And a spreader, it exits out onto grade? Is that the intent?
Yes. So a level spreader, instead of having a point discharge, where you have just a pipe opening at grade, the pipe is below grade, and you spread that out basically in a trough, so the water can come into that level spreader, and in essence, bubble up through rock, and then leave the site a sheet flow, rather than a point discharge.
Just a couple more points, and I'll get off the stormwater management. So the four pieces of property that are on Stratford Avenue, they have front yard basins, it looks like, but none in the rear, so they do the same scenario? The front yard basins handle the lot and the house, and then the common area basin handles the lot itself? Or the road?
In those cases, the system in front is going to handle a portion of the house and the drive, and then to what extent we can, there is surface flow from those lots to that common system, at least some of them.
All right. So moving off of stormwater management, then. The common use area, you said, is for community use. When you say "community," you're talking about this development alone, is that correct? In other words, that's not public?
Right.
Okay. Okay. So then, there are some security measures to keep average citizens from going back there, I assume?
It's just private property.
All right. You're not encouraging them. You're not going to have a paved walkway and say, "Enter here." Okay. Thank you. There was talk about, you know, the potential for adding right-of-way for sidewalks around the property. Is there consideration for doing that along these lots as well, so that if we wanted to develop a safer path for the residents, not just of your community, but of the local area, to be able to get to the train station? We know that the Hamilton development is not doing that, I don't believe.
We are extending sidewalk along those four lots.
Okay, so there is a sidewalk, not just an easement for that. Okay, good. Good. That's all I have for right now. Thank you.
Hi, Sharon Willis, 335 Stratford Avenue, also in Tridifern. So, question I have is, on the other side of these lots are Tridifern residents. So if you could spend some more time talking about the barriers and the protections you're putting here for the Tridifern residents, specifically, you know, the two neighbors that border these two houses? And then also, you talk about this overflow ultimately going to this back corner, and that goes right into our neighbor's yard. So what protections are being put in place to keep that flooding from continuing and damaging these properties?
So as mentioned, our stormwater systems are designed to completely collect and infiltrate the 100-year storm event for this area. So previously, where runoff from these houses, as well as our project area, would run across these lots, we're now able to collect that through inlets on these lots and the road itself. So now, we're not going to have runoff that leaves this site across these lots, as well as the lots in the back. The overflow I mentioned is just for, you know, cases where the 100-year storm has exceeded, and the systems would not be able to handle that. And again, we're not altering any drainage path. That is the low point on the site. That is where this runoff would have gone prior to development, so we're not going to change the drainage path, but we are going to greatly reduce the runoff that goes to that point, again, capturing a little over 90% of that drainage area, and just removing that even from the ability to flow onto adjacent properties.
Is there any other public comment? Come on up.
Hi. Cindy Hanson again. I live on that property where it's just going right off the end, and I did talk to the developer, and I'm just, can they do, can you do something to direct the water over to the tracks or something in the back? So it doesn't just flow over into my, I mean, that was sort of terrifying when you just said, it's just going out the back of this property, right, you know, into my house area? That's all.
Again, under normal circumstances, you're not going to see any runoff from the site onto those adjoining properties. We have located, to the extent possible, the level spreader in the very back corner of that property, so it's not going to run through your property near the pool. It's now been all directed to move further down. The runoff today crosses your property from our site to the tracks, but we've eliminated over 90% of that drainage area. So, most of the time, if not all the time, you're not going to have any runoff onto your property.
Well, it didn't flow to my property until, um, it didn't really flow to my property until they cut down all the trees on that property to make a meadow. That's when it started really flowing a lot, and the erosion, you can, I mean, you've seen it, obviously, underneath the fence. I was just wondering if you could do something that would direct it more, you know, well, you know, to the Radnor side?
Well, what we also have done is elevated lots Nine and Ten, so that the runoff from those lots is directed away from your property back towards the cul-de-sac. So you don't have that entire swath of land draining through your property. It's now cut off by the cul-de-sac and the other stormwater, the inlets, things of that nature.
Right. But there's also a lot more impervious surface, so.
Which we're collecting and managing underground, rather than allowing it to run off over the surface.
Okay. It was just a little terrifying.
My name is John Sheehan. I live on a property adjoining the Stratford Office Building. The back of my house backs up to that parking lot. And I have two, two big concerns. First of all, and both concerns are equal, I walk around our neighborhood, and when I decide to walk down Eagle Road, it's dangerous. It's very narrow. I'm not sure what the width of that road is. It might be 24 feet, which is pretty close to the minimum road width for a township road, and it's dangerous. So adding, just adding nine more residences with an average of two cars each is a lot of additional traffic on that road. So that's one big concern. Second concern I have is the tree loss, and I'm sure the applicant is willing to comply with the township ordinance on replacement trees. But the question I have is, what is the net loss of tree basal area? A goal of our Shade Tree Commission, I believe, is to have net zero tree loss in our township. The current township ordinance of Radnor specifies how many trees you have to replace for each tree removed, based upon the diameter of the trees removed. So the question I have is, what is the area loss after taking into account the total area of all the trees removed versus the area of the replacement trees? Does anybody?
Well, John, I have two things. Number one, when the traffic folks are here, I think that's the most legitimate time for you, for your comment, the first comment. The second one, the Shade Tree Commission is going to hear this plan. They're going to.
Right.
And the Shade Tree Commission, as you may or may not know, is doing a heck of a job replacing trees.
Right.
Left and right in Radnor, and they are concerned about your, what you're bringing up.
Right.
But that's, that commission is the commission to come to, to address this. This, we're, that's why we have a Shade Tree Commission. So, you're not going to get those answers here.
I understand that. I may not be available to attend the Shade Tree Commission hearings, but just like stormwater, tree loss is a major issue, and I know, Matt, you're intimately aware of that. You've measured the tree loss in Radnor Township. But this, the size of this area and the number of trees to be removed, I would guess is one of the most significant loss of trees that'll take place in Radnor Township in a number of years.
Well, I got to say, I mean, I looked, you know, I looked closely over those trees, and there, many of them were in very poor shape.
Right.
They have lost their canopy already. So I think the applicant is, by what I'm seeing, the applicant is doing his, their due diligence to replace trees.
Right. So. Are they willing, are they willing to replace enough trees to come close to a net zero loss?
That's a question that, if you're not there, I'll be happy to ask on your behalf.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, John.
Is there a schedule available showing the trees to be removed with the size of each tree?
I believe that exists. I'm sure it does. Steve Schreiner's walked us through it on Shade Tree, but that was the previous plan.
Right.
So this is a whole new presentation.
Okay. Would it be possible to get a copy of that schedule?
It'll be, it'll be on YouTube, you know, the night of the meeting.
All right.
And if, just call me if you have any questions about that.
All right. Just one final comment. I have a very high regard for all the developments that Mr. Caswell has been involved in. Luella Court, outstanding development. So, this represents a great opportunity, but I'm concerned about traffic and tree loss. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, John.
If I might just speak to that, we're providing 129 trees in addition to the trees that are being removed. So we're compensating according to the ordinance requirements. So, an additional 129 trees over the trees that would be removed.
Good evening. I'm Jennifer Pickett. I live at 3 Madison Lane in Wayne, and I'm the HOA president of the 115 Stratford Avenue, the 11-unit townhouse development. And my question is regarding the proposed new sidewalk, which is basically, I'm delighted it's going to, there's going to be a sidewalk there in front of those other four houses. My question is, who is going to be responsible for maintaining and plowing it, snow removal? Because our HOA, we maintain the sidewalk and remove the snow, and I'm just curious if that would be the same. And along those lines, I don't know if the developer has an answer to the question, when the HOA, when the developer's done developing and all the houses have been sold, is the HOA going to be administered by the residents, or is it going to be professionally administered? Thank you.
So, the HOA will maintain the sidewalks, and it will be, the board will be the residents, but they'll hire a professional management company to manage the HOA.
Thank you.
I'm Deuce Satterfield. I live at 207 Stratford. And my question is regarding the common area. Will there be a lighting plan for the common area? No.
Any further public comment? Seeing none. Colby, given that I have reservations about not having the traffic study presented, what's the next, what would you advise the next step to be here?
I think the next step is, you're, you're going to have to do a motion. I think that you're going to have to probably do the waivers first. I would do that in one motion, or if you want to do them individually, you can. But if you believe they're all going to do, I think that there was the three, and then there was maybe a partial. And I don't think the partial was on the, was the partial on the review letter? But then, all of the rest of, you can do a second motion to all the will complies with all the review letters, with both Gilmore's and our townships.
So you would recommend actually, actually approving, preliminary approval?
That is up to you, whether you want to do that. If you, you did say that you wanted to wait. I didn't know if you wanted to do preliminary approval subject to the traffic, or you just want to wait to review the traffic and then table it?
It's just, I think it's cleaner to do that. I would just rather table this right now, if that's.
So the one question I guess I have, Matt, and obviously defer to your expertise here, but, so we are, will comply across the board on all, on all the review letters, specifically with respect to traffic. So, I don't know if kind of coming back is going to generate any additional kind of correction.
I think, I think, when the, I just feel like the public needs an opportunity before we grant approval to at least express more, more of their thoughts, given more information. That's all.
Understood. Okay. Thanks, Matt.
Mr. Falcone, if that's the way the commission goes, we'll need an extension.
Understood.
We're at 10-4 now. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. The last agenda item tonight is a zoning hearing board application.
Can we do a motion?
A motion to table?
Yes.
Do I have a second? Second. All in favor? Thank you. Thanks, Trish. Anyway, the zoning hearing board application.
Matt, could I request a five-minute recess?
Sure.
Thank you. Till 7:51.
Okay, folks, the five-minute break is, is over. And we have, we have our last, last agenda item.
I don't think we have quorum.
We don't? Do?
I have four. Oh.
I'll wait for Lane to get up to the dais. I just want, before we get started, I just want to remind everyone that the planning commission has to hear zoning hearing board appeals, before the zoning hearing board hears them. What we're charged with here tonight, are, the sole thing we are charged with is looking at the four hardship issues, or whatever you want to call it, the four issues that you guys are taking to the zoning hearing board. We're not here to look at the development plan, we're not here to look at the traffic studies, we're not here to look at pretty pictures, we're not here to look at a presentation. I don't want that. And I'm going to stop that if that happens, because I want, I want, when we last met, the charge to you guys was either go to zoning hearing or come back to us, and you're coming back to us. And I want to see what, if, any changes you've made in what you presented to us about the hardship issues, or the issues that you need zoning hearing board relief from. So, that's my spiel, and that's it.
Sounds good. I appreciate that, Matt. And I'll just give a very brief kind of introduction. We're back, as you know, we were here before, you saw this plan. We heard the comments from the planning commission, and we thought it was kind of more than prudent to shelve that upcoming planning date, go back, have some of you out to the site that were willing to come out and take a look, revisit the plan, revisit what we were asking for, and then come back with, you know, our response to the meeting. So that's why we're here tonight, really, to just, to be responsive where we could to the items you guys raised, and we'll, we'll be specific on those points. So I have tonight with me, and I think at the last meeting, one of the things that you all asked for was representative from the Federation to come. I think there were some questions specifically about the building, and the Federation's intent with the building. So we do have that tonight. We have our architect as well. There were some questions at the last hearing specifically with respect to architecture. We also have John Westrom here, this is a Westrom Development, and we have our engineer back. So, I will exit stage left here and turn it over to the folks that you want to hear from, I hope. So, our first will bring up representative from the Federation, and she will address some of the questions with respect to Heubner Hall, and what the intent was there for the Federation, and how this project maybe came about, understanding, to be brief and kind of direct to the point. There you go.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to address the commission. I'm Nikki DiCaro. I'm the Chief Financial Officer, Chief Operating Officer of the Jewish Federation, and I'm responsible for all the campuses that we own and operate. We've been looking hard at this campus. It's our largest campus, and it's a campus that requires a significant amount of effort to make it what I would call a performing asset, to be able to support itself. And we provide a lot of services to agencies on this, on that campus, and we do so at our cost. We've done that since we owned the campus almost 20 years ago, and we've undertaken a real review of this development to figure out the best way for us to take the campus and make itself sustaining. This opportunity came to us after a lot of review, what to do here. Senior housing is something that the Jewish organizations through a number of Jewish agencies do. We believe that senior housing is something that the market needs. We also believe the campus provides that opportunity. Heubner Hall building is one that we acquired when we acquired the property. It's an old building. The current tenant is going to be moving out, able to outgrown the building. It's not a building that meets any ADA requirements or any other requirements that require a total redo. And the size of this, of the footprint of this building does not enable us to bring in a tenant that'll allow that, that campus to be self-sustaining. So, we've done a significant evaluation of the property. We believe the building needs to be raised and replaced with a modern facility that meets all the required regulations, including ADA, electrical code, and all the other codes that make that building a safe-use building.
So we'll just kind of move through, but we wanted to address kind of the Federation's intent with respect to that hall. Next, we have John Westrom, who will speak more specifically to this project.
Thank you, everyone. First of all, thank you for having me this evening. I apologize that I was not present at the last meeting. I was detained other where, in other place, but I think it was very important. I did watch the entire video of the whole thing, so I do understand what the questions were and what was going on. So, we're going to talk, I'm going to go through the four issues that you have and try to get through them as quickly as possible. And really, the, the use part, I think was, Mary Eberly had said kind of that that fits a special exception, so that that really shouldn't be too much of a talk, but kind of showing you the site plan of where we are with everything. And really, the, the thousand-pound gorilla, or the thou, whatever it might be, the most biggest issue that we have here is the fact of the steep slopes. The steep slopes are what cause every issue other than the length of everything, of the building that we had, which we believe we've changed to modify. So, the question really was, is why were we putting the building where we wanted to put it? I wanted to get that, because it shows you why we chose a certain location for the steep slopes. Is that permissible to, to talk about? Okay. So, the bottom line on it is, is that this campus has separate, has multiple uses. Number one is, the largest use is the Barak Hebrew Academy, which you can see takes up a predominant amount of the space on the campus. Second is the Harkam College, which is all the way in the back by a secondary driveway, which goes kind of through, through the backside, behind Barak, all the way back to Harkam College, and really doesn't have any other access. I guess you could loop around here, but it's, it's not conducive to large number of vehicles, et cetera. And how do you, I always never say it correctly. Jaihi is, I wanted to make sure I said it correctly. Jaihi is a newly built building there, and then there's Cheder Chabad, which is a school that we're talking about right now, in the Heubner Hall building. So, there, there exist those four different uses. In, in respect to that, is, okay, we looked at this and said, what could we do here on this property? So the first site we looked at was saying, well, to eliminate the use of steep slopes, we could try to put a building over where Barak Academy is, where they have all their sports complex. It's really not the right place to, to put it, because it would render that facility, take a large portion, portion away from that. Secondly, was we looked behind where Harkam College was and said, wow, there's a lot of steep slopes back there. We'd have to drive all the way back through this access point, limited parking, how would we handle getting access there? And then, we'd be right next to the adjoining neighbors. So why would we want to put it there? So why would we want to put it there? Thirdly was, is, well, Heubner Hall is going to be, is non-functional, why wouldn't we put it there? We know that there's steep slopes on the site, and on the site, there's 21% of the campus is steep slopes. So there's both natural and made portions of it. So we looked and said, this is the best portion, the best place to put the parcel. Now, in doing that, we actually looked at it in three ways. The first way was, we wanted to have the front of the building facing Bryn Mawr Avenue. But the problem with that was, is that, is you can look at this, and can I grab, Mike, can I grab the, that map? I just want number three, please. The third, and you can put it over here so everybody, I don't know if that helps, or does that take that, if we have that on, you can't have that on, can you? Is that the, okay. So, let's lay it down. So, in this particular instance, you have this fancy thing here, I'm going to grab out of here, but that this particular portion, there were steep slopes back here, so I'll start over. This is where the building, we looked, there was no steep slopes, but that would affect the ability for the school to really operate the way it should. Going back to Harkam College, if we put something back there, again, significant steep slopes, limited access, very difficult to get to. And then the third place was where Heubner Hall is, and there's steep slopes behind it, but those steep slopes, 86% of those steep slopes are man-made from the existing building of when Heubner Hall was made, as well as some of the grating, I believe, from the church adjacent. So, I'd like to go back to the other plan if I could, I don't know how we do that. Can we go back to the other, there we go, perfect. And showing that the original plan wanted to have everything facing onto Bryn Mawr Avenue, we realized that we would affect all some steep slopes, more steep slopes than we would the other way, and we also were starting to impinge upon the pond that's in the rear. Okay, how can we mitigate that, and how can we try to eliminate the steep slopes? So number two was, we turned the building this way, a 90-degree angle, and we know that we're in the steep slopes, but we're also using that particular area as, think about a walkout basement condition. You have steep slopes coming down, you've got a walkout basement condition, and we're using that as our garage. We're reducing impervious coverage, we're reducing the need for vehicular traffic going through, and a bulk of our, underneath the walkout basement condition is all used as parking for our garage. We met with the fire marshal, we went through everything, and this had more impervious coverage. The fire marshal said, well, why don't you do, make a couple tweaks, which are very minimal, you really can't see them here, and go this route, minimize the steep slope disturbance, we're 1.35 acres, of which 14% of it is natural. It's about 8,500 square feet, is what we're talking about, of natural steep slopes that were going to be disturbed. 86% of those were man-made. So the 14% of the 1.35 acres is about 8,500 square feet. That's what we're talking about. It's about maybe three times the size of this room of what we would be disturbing over what has already been disturbed. So I just wanted to put that out there, to understand that the steep slopes really are the cause of everything here. Now, I'm going to digress a little bit about the, this building is, as Nikki just told you, it's not really functional, and it's functionally obsolete, and has a small footprint. It could not be modified to be used in the use that we're talking about. I'm not going to go through this, just telling you that the parking, especially with the fact that we have underground parking or under-building parking, actually helps with elimination of steep slopes and impervious coverage. From a traffic study, I'm not going to get into this, other than the fact that there was questions at the last meeting, and we had a proposed low-volume driveway approved by PennDOT on 7/7, which was two days after the hearing that was done. So, the issues that we have are, the use from special exception, we think that there's been no change. The height is 48 feet, and the reason why the height is 48 feet is even though this is a three-story building, because of the steep slopes, which causes all the problem, is why we had to go to 48 feet. Now, the question was, is why are we using a building that might not be so contextual in the process? We used our existing building that we built in Doylestown, because that's what we had shown the Federation, and they had liked it so much. However, in looking at it and evaluating the great comments that I heard and I saw from the video of the meeting, is, we said, you know what? Contextually, it might not be the right thing. So we looked at reducing the building height to a flat roof, and by doing a flat roof, it actually provided the entire building height to be 40 feet, which is two feet above the 38 feet, which means that we have a two-foot, really asking for two feet of relief. The only reason why it is 40 feet is because in the rear of it, like, think about a walkout basement condition, that's where most of the height differential is. From what you're going to see from Bryn Mawr Avenue, you're really only going to see 35 feet. So, and then from the building length standpoint, we modified the building length to put some different jutting out, and I'll show you that in a minute, so that we're not 331 feet in length, but we're only 160 feet in length. And really, as I said, the steep slopes are the whole crux here. 1.35 acres, of which 86% is man-made, and in looking at what contextual, because as Matt, I kind of told you, and you know me from serving on the zoning code commission of the city of Philadelphia, we rewrote the entire, I was part of the commission that rewrote the entire zoning code several years back, is, how do you look at things contextually? So the contextual aspect is, are we creating some contextual craziness here in terms of the steep slopes? And the answer really is no. The Barak Annex, which I said we really can't get into, it only has a 30-foot height, but that's really a gem. The Barak School, though, is three to four stories on a 44,000-square-foot footprint, which is about what our size footprint is, but in the rear of their building, there's 61.3 feet in height. So 61.3 feet is even higher than anything that we had proposed, and one of their facades exceeds the 60 feet, the 160 feet in length. Harkam College in the rear is five stories, it's got a smaller footprint, but it also has a 62.1-foot height limit. So, we're really not contextually out of scale with what's going on here, and what we wanted to talk about, too, is J-Hi was recently built, and then the Presbyterian Church, you can see, is between 40, 45 feet, but it has an 80-foot spire. And we looked at all the architecture in there and said, okay, what can we do to change things? This was the previous rendition of what our Doylestown building looks like, and we said, you know what? We're going to go contextual. We're going to go flat roof, we're going to bring everything into a much more modern institutional look. We've modified everything to look at what the uses of materials were, we paid a little bit of homage to the existing building with some of the cast stone around some of the windows, and we tried to do some things that we can to look at what the existing building was, but we're not going to keep the existing building. So this was the previous plan, this is the future plan, those were both in black and white, this is in a color, like I said, I'm not going to spend too much time, but to show you that here's where the steep slopes come in. So, if you're looking at the front, you're talking about 35 feet that you're going to see from Bryn Mawr Avenue, along the whole scheme of things, okay? The only place that you're going to see the steep slopes ever is in the rear of the property, which is never going to be visible from the road. So that is where the steep slopes caused the increase in request for the hardship in the zoning code to allow us, by asking for 40 feet, it's an average of all of these particular areas based upon a certain pinpoint location. So again, from Bryn Mawr Avenue, 35 feet, maybe it drops a little bit more, maybe it's 38 to close to 40 over here, but that's about it, okay? The real amount, the length where we have to get the variance is, by the time we get using the rear of the property, which increases the level to over 40 feet. So, also in terms of the breaks that we did, we did 160-foot breaks, we modified that. And then, I'm just going to whip through this because these are previous versus revised, just to show you that they're less in size. This is a very good view, because this is what the view is going to be from Bryn Mawr Avenue. Bryn Mawr Avenue view is going to be 35 feet. This was more like 44 feet, okay? We lowered it because we listened to what you said, and we understand what you said, and we respected what you said, and we wanted to make sure this was contextual. This is how it looked previously, from the rear, from the existing school, from Barak, and then, this is what it would look like from lower down on Bryn Mawr Avenue. You can see that this building on the right, the revised, is lower than what the building was on the left. And then from behind, and one of the things that I said about the steep slopes and why we positioned the building the way we did is because we did not want to get and affect this beautiful pond area. We kept the building away from that, and we're really using the building as a retaining wall to not disturb additional steep slopes. Our effort is to try to preserve the steep slopes as much as possible, minimize any work that we would have to be doing on it. Again, this is just another view from the previous and what the revised is. And from the neighbors, this is the cul-de-sac on, I don't know how you say it, Falkland Road. You can't even see the building. So, we wanted to make sure that we showed all of that. So in conclusion, is the use, we believe, is done by special exception. The campus planning was asked for, why did you guys pick this location? I think that you, if I understand, we did not want to disturb steep slopes all over the place. We're using an existing building that already disturbed the steep slopes, and we're just adding to that a little bit. And our 1.35 acres that we would disturb, 14% of that is about 8,000 square feet, of which was natural, the remaining balance was man-made there. Heubner Hall is not, it's obsolete. Unfortunately, I understand a lot about it, everybody liked to preserve things, sometimes you just can't. The project size and scope is consistent with what other senior communities and senior living needs are. Our traffic is minimal impact, and we took the recommendations from this commission, which we appreciate. We worked very hard over the last two months to be able to bring that building down in size. We kept it in contextual basis with the surrounding uses, not exceeding the height of what those existing uses were. And then with the building length, we modified the, jutting it forward and backwards by more than six feet to get our building length less than 160 feet with breaks. And that's our presentation.
Comments? PC?
Just a quick question. J-Hi, what's the use for that particular tenant? What do they do?
J-Hi is an educational institution that helps children that are high on the autism scale to become self-sufficient, develops them into people that can go into the workforce and can be independent and live independently outside of the J-Hi organization.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Last time we were here, David, I think I asked the question about the use, so maybe you can address it. Plant-institutional allows for just one use for the lot, I'm assuming you're still not subdividing here. But you obviously have Barak Hebrew Academy, Harkam College, J-Hi, which are all educational institutions. You also have accessory use, certainly by Barak with a playing field. You're introducing another use. You referenced a case.
Yes.
Could you elaborate?
Sure. When we, when J-Hi first appeared before the zoning hearing board, it had subsequently come back. It was approved as a residential facility for the J-Hi students, or the J-Hi residents. And at that point, the use issue was debated and briefed by the township and by the applicant J-Hi at that point, that the residential component would stand alone as a use, and ultimately, it was approved by the zoning hearing board at that time as a standalone residential use as part of the campus. They never built that project, but it was fully approved as special exception. They subsequently came back, I wasn't a part of that application, I think, and changed it, relocated it, and just went with educational. I don't, honestly, MJ, I don't have any idea why. I wasn't a part of that process, but that very issue was raised, discussed, and briefed. I think Noah Cutler, back then, raised it from the zoning hearing board.
Got it. So, I guess some residential use was approved, but as an extension to the educational use?
So, that was the issue, I think, he was saying it was not a part of the educational use. It was a standalone residential facility. They weren't students that were going to be living there, they were simply folks that were going to come in, they were going to live in the facility. It was going to be basically a house for them to coexist, develop life skills, and move on. So that initial project was a residential, it was a home.
Got it. Of course, we're not hearing that today, we're hearing a case for the senior citizens residential facility, which is a very distinct use from the educational.
Correct.
Says that you have on the property. Can you speak to that?
So I think we would approach it the same way we did that initial J-Hi. That was, it was a contemplated use by the ordinance designation. It was one of the listed independent uses, and the zoning hearing board ultimately determined it could exist on the site because it was a previously contemplated approved use for the site.
Okay, thank you.
So, but it's a good question, MJ, because it was a full-blown debate at that point, and there was definitely differences of opinion on that. So the hearing board was put into recess while the issue was briefed before. I think it was John Ryan, maybe, was the solicitor back then, Steve? Do you remember? It was a long time ago. I mean, I guess it's all relative, but it was a pretty long time ago. I think it might have been 10 or 15 years ago.
Yeah, and I'm not sure if it's a planning commission's space for that. However, I would...
Oh, for sure. I mean, it was definitely something that was brought up back then.
As a commissioner, I'd like to see a little bit more.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts by the commission before I have some? So, in terms of use, I think it's a great use. I think it's almost a necessary use for Radnor to have a facility like this. We really don't have anything like this. We're probably getting something like this eventually at Valley Forge, but, so if I was voting on the use, I wouldn't have any issues. I visited the site, I saw the steep slopes. I don't think there's any way anyone can prove that they're man-made. If you can, please prove it, but I don't think there is proof out there. Based on what I know about steep slopes, it sure looked like bulldozers made that in order to create the building that sits on the top of, by the parking lot. So I think that if I had to vote on the steep slopes issue, I'd probably say they're man-made. Height, all I can say is the applicants made some effort to hear us on that. Length of the structure, I don't, it doesn't strike me, taking the long view of the campus, that it is a deal-breaker. So, I guess I would vote, as I did the last time, I would vote in favor of recommending that this relief be granted by the zoning hearing board. I'd like to hear any other thoughts about these issues. I mean, I really don't want to hear anything that isn't about the relief, because that's just not our business tonight.
I think... No, I've got a few comments. I don't have any problem with the use. I think it's a phenomenal use, and as we've discussed many times, it's probably a much-needed use. Its development by variance, it doesn't seem to me to be an approach we want to be encouraging. I understand the Federation's need to have a viable and use there that would help sustain the campus, but I work with developers all the time. We've, I just, we've never approached a project that says we need three or four variances to make a project work. And it's just, the variance process is there for when there is conflict, when the code doesn't quite align with the property, or, I mean, it's there for hardships. And I don't see a hardship here. It's just because they want to do it. And that doesn't seem to me a hardship. And so, you know, I'm opposed to it, not because I'm opposed to the Federation, I want to see them develop their property. I don't think flipping the same plan around on the site that's a pre-designed building is a planning exercise. That's like, you're not fooling anybody with that, at least you're not fooling me. But, you know, putting that plan around the site and saying it doesn't work, it's not much of an exercise. I think the use is... I think the use is great. Yeah, I think you've got a substantial amount of land there to do it. And I think with a little more clever and interesting, and you've got a fine architect that you're working with, that you can find a place on that campus that doesn't require development by variance. And I just don't think it's an approach we should encourage.
So to echo Mr. Varanhorst's comments, I have a slightly different point of view here. I think you've met the burden of addressing most of the issues. However, I am conflicted on the fact that there is a second substantially different use on this lot. I think you do have other choices with respect to where you can place it. Obviously, the Hebrew Academy would be at a loss should you choose to place your facility there. And I don't quite believe that you met the standard for us to sign off on this.
I'm going to go to public comment if there's no other commission comment.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is David Moneymaker. That's really my name. I'm the church administrator for Proclamation Presbyterian Church. We own the nine-plus acre parcel immediately to the west of the Jewish Federation property line. I wanted to address three practical concerns that arise from the legal issues. But, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if that's something that you wanted to hear.
I appreciate that, but I think we really have to be super focused, because if the zoning hearing board grants these variances, or if they approve this plan marching forward, it's coming back to us. It's coming back to us for land development. It's coming back to us for a lot of things. So I just, I really don't think we should hear anything that's off the point of the ZBH appeal.
Okay. Please tell me if I'm out of order. But for the criteria for a special exception, it's my understanding that in the zoning code, that there needs to be proof that it's suitable with respect to traffic and provides adequate parking. And that is, I would say that would be the major concern for Proclamation Church, is traffic flow and parking. And if I, with some assistance, if I can show, if I can show you on here the connecting driveway and how that impacts us, I'd be pleased to do that.
I'm going to get some advice from the solicitor on this, because I feel strongly that we need to stay on point here and that this opportunity will come back if this project goes forward.
It's not really the purpose of this board to determine whether or not there are traffic patterns. That's something at the zoning hearing board that you can do. You can obviously say those general concerns that you have, but you don't have to prove that to us, and we don't have any testimony from the other side, whether or not. If they have to bring that testimony and prove it at the zoning hearing board, that's the place to do it.
Understood. I can confine my remarks to the steep slope, if that would be appropriate. Okay. Regarding the steep slope, there will be new access from the connecting driveway. I can't, here we go. There's a, the driveway that connects the two campuses, this is the, the Proclamation campus is here. We have three bays of parking. And right here is a confluence or an intersection where our first bay of parking joins the connecting driveway for the campus. The proposed driveway to go to the underground parking facility of 61 spots would be within a steep slope, and it creates kind of an undesirable confluence of three different driveways coming together, which will, I believe, increase traffic that will go through the Proclamation parking lot. Coming down, there is also a proposal, this is completely within the steep slope, would be new driveway access to Bryn Mawr Avenue. I'm at a loss to know how steep the steep slope is, but it is significantly greater than 20 percent. Eager to see if there would be retaining walls on either side of this driveway access, which would, it would be less than desirable in terms of an aesthetic. And so that would address the steep slope. My other issues pertain to this parking lot right here. One thing I'd like the commissioners to know is back in October of 1996, the church negotiated an agreement with American College regarding a reciprocal use of this connecting driveway right here. The purpose of that was to keep traffic internal, if you will, and reduce traffic congestion on Bryn Mawr Avenue for worship services for the church, for conferences for American College, and for special events for both institutions. So that easement is filed in the Delaware County courthouse, and it is perpetual in nature, and it is to work to the benefit of both. So that is something that we, if we don't like traffic flow, we can't obstruct that easement, because it's perpetual in nature. So that is another concern of ours. I was hoping to hear more that the concerns that were raised on July 5th, and I'm not trying to be sarcastic or difficult to get along with, but what I'm hearing is there's been a change insofar as a flat roof, and this bump out or break in a 331-foot building, I think we're kind of being coy to say that it's really two 160-feet buildings. That's, to me, that seems disingenuous, and that's about as strong as I can say it. So have the concerns from July 5th been met with an eight-foot reduction and a flat roof and these two bump outs? I beg to differ. So that concludes my remarks.
Do you need that?
I don't. Thank you. So I'll just be responsive to a couple of those comments. The first being, the driveway coming in and the steep slopes that are disturbed here are actually permitted slopes, where there's, they were permitted for the church's parking lot expansion. Is that correct, Mike? And so, under the code, where you're able to identify slopes that are created by permit and approved plan, those slopes are exempt from the restrictions in the steep slope ordinance. So we're actually not seeking relief for disturbance of these slopes, correct? The relief is back in these slopes. These are not subject to the ordinance requirements pursuant to the code, because they were approved by plan. So that's with respect to the first comment. The second comment and the third comment with respect to building height and building length, I don't, we're not trying to be coy. We're trying to work within the parameters of the ordinance. And you all are aware that there are provisions in the code with respect to building length where they ask for the articulation of six foot to separate, so it's not one big massing. So we went back and tried to redesign within the parameters of the code. We didn't just come up with, oh, we'll throw a six-foot deviation in here and hope that it's different. That's responsive within the parameters of the code. And then additionally, building height is also controlled by the way the code measures buildings and building height. So although it may not be responsive, and, you know, I appreciate, you know, Stephen's expertise in the area, and I certainly appreciate neighbor concerns. All an applicant can do, whether it's this applicant or any other applicant, is look at your code and try and do the best they can do in the code. And that's what this applicant has tried to do, is it going to make everybody happy? This is a very small segment, and it's very clear it's not making everybody happy, so I'm sure that's the way it goes. But it was not in an effort to be deceptive or coy. It was, let's go back to the code and see what we can do there. And so that's why we've done what we've done. It was to try and be responsive to the best we could.
Hi, I'm John Hersker, and Christine Lucas and I reside at 821 Volk Lane Road. We are neighbors of both the Schwartz Campus and Proclamation Church. We are happy to be. We've enjoyed being neighbors with the Schwartz Campus and with the American College before them, with the Proclamation Church and the Carter Estate before that. So we have some history with the property. We have concerns, and they mainly relate to our concern for the church and what they're going to have to deal with, with traffic. You may not want to hear that now, but it's a very relevant factor here, the sheer size of this project. Just a clarifying point, what is the square footage of Hebron Hall? And what's the square footage of this proposed facility? 140,000. Okay. That's a significant increase. This is bigger than a football field. And it's going to have definite impact on Proclamation Church and the shared parking and the traffic and so on. And we certainly want Schwartz Campus to be developed in a proper way, and we certainly want Proclamation Church to be able to continue to live in harmony with the Schwartz Campus. And we have concerns about this project having a significant impact on that. And this may be not the moment to discuss traffic and parking and all the rest, but if you're talking about giving variances to the point that was made earlier about the development of this property requiring variances, maybe that should be taken into account. Christine, you had comments?
Hi, Christine, as John said, Christine Lucas. The only comment I would make as far as you hearing the full concerns of the church tonight is that the overall size, that was just clarified again, which is a huge factor of multiplication in size. Some of the questions and concerns that the church may be raising may be helpful to you to understand the requested size and the exceptions that are being asked in length and height, which result in square footage. That's the only comment, is that I would encourage you to hear any concerns from the church regarding that, that number of parking spaces, number of rooms, number of parking spaces, it all relates to size, so for consideration.
And this will go before the zoning hearing board this month?
Understood. But I'm saying for your sake, just to understand the full breadth of the concerns. Otherwise, thank you.
And I would just like to add... I think that traffic is, I'm sorry, Matt, but I know you don't want to talk about traffic, but the reason you're talking about traffic is because the imposition of this stock plan on this site forces the traffic to be where it is. It's not, it's not a thoughtful review of the site and figuring out a condition that works best for everyone. It's the imposition of a plan on the site. You can clearly see from this graphic how enormous that footprint is. I mean, mentally, put it over the playing field. I mean, so I think traffic's legitimate mainly because of where the traffic is. I don't know the counts or anything like that, but, so, I'll leave it at that.
I was just going to add, my understanding is that at the time that Proclamation Church acquired this property, there was an exception required because it was less than a 10-acre property, and that that was granted specifically because of the agreement with the American College then for shared parking, shared traffic patterns, and so on. So Proclamation Church's fate is very much tied to the neighboring campus. It's not just that they're happening to be alongside each other. It's all integrated. And so the effect that granting these variances for this particular plan has on Proclamation Church, I think to Christine's point, is relevant to the decisions you make here. So, thank you for hearing us.
I'd love to talk about parking, if you want to hear it.
I think that's a ZBH issue. I really do. I mean, that's an issue for us if it passes muster at ZBH.
Hello, my name is Carl Stevens, and I live directly across the street from where this project is planned. I just want to get clarification of the use of this project if it goes forward. We've used the term senior living. Does this mean that this is going to be a continuing care retirement community, which would have a combination of independent living, assisted living, memory care, and skilled nursing?
I don't believe it fits that definition exactly, but the applicants could...
Other than the skilled nursing.
So it has...
Independent personal care, which is assisted and memory care.
Thank you. And who would be the manager of the property?
We have several management companies that we're working with right now. I'm not, I don't know which one would be the management company for that.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, would you like a motion?
I would love to.
Okay, great. I'd like to make a motion to recommend denial of the application to the zoning hearing board.
Second?
Aye.
Good luck at zoning hearing. Do we have any new business?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to lead something in. So, most of our work as a planning commission, it involves hearings about specific land development, zoning applications and whatnot. Been witness to that tonight and a participant. I don't want to underestimate the importance of that work, and it really makes sure that Radnor continues to have smart development and that it benefits every resident. But also, one of the most overlooked duties of the planning commission in potentially more impactful ways that we can serve is by actually introducing zoning ordinances that enhance our community. And this authority is actually, it's codified in the municipal planning code. And the authority is fairly broad for us to do this. And at our June 6th meeting, we listened to a presentation by Radnor Rockwell, and this was 1,001 Eagle Road presentation. This is a development of about 60 acres. And prior to this presentation, the applicant appeared in front of the planning commission on September 14th, 2021. And at the time, one of our residents, Michael Carney, I believe, I have it in my notes, he raised the issue with that development of a potentially historic structure. This was a guardhouse at the foot of the property, and he requested that the guardhouse be preserved. And as a result of his request and the acquiescence of the developer, the good news is that the guardhouse is going to be preserved. But we currently, as a township, we don't have a historic structure preservation ordinance and outside of the three districts... and outside of the three districts stipulated by HARB. So the idea behind a historic structure, scattered site preservation ordinance, is that it would catalog and it would protect individual historic properties or properties that are deemed historic in Radnor, not just those located in the HARB district. So the Board of Commissioners actually saw some wisdom in this, and, which is why in their meeting of June 14th, '21, Commissioner Lisa Borowski introduced, and the rest of the board actually agreed, that they should refer a draft of such an ordinance to us. It never made it to us. So on June 13th of this year, Commissioner Borowski pulled the rest of the Board of Commissioners to refer this ordinance for our consideration again. So this matter has been referred to us twice. I want to make sure we actually don't overlook the referral and that we get a crack at it and take a look at it. So the purpose of my conversation with you guys tonight is to lay the proposed language of the ordinance at your feet. It's not for consideration tonight, but certainly at the next meeting, if it pleases the chairman, we can discuss it further. So I have the digital version that I'll pass on to, to all of you individually, as well as a hard copy here, which I'll pass out.
Sounds great, MJ. Anyone have any other new business, all business? I'd like to adjourn the meeting. Do I have a motion? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
See you in October.